Which one?
Well.
Yeah, because we're going to take the girls with.
Ah, well, that's what they do. Once it clicks on, then they know what style. There they go.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, Mayor, Council, I don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried invocation from Reverend Freddie from the Methanod House of Prayer. Good evening.
Good evening. From Maranata House of Prayer, 335 Adams. My name is Freddie McAdam. Let's pray. Our blessed heavenly Father, we honor and praise your holy name this evening. We thank you for all your goodness and blessings over us and the city of Hutchinson. We invoke your presence in our midst as we pray that your wisdom and favor be with our mayor, the administrator, the counselors, and all concerned authorities as they make effort, choices, and decisions for the benefit of our city. Bless their families as well as these leaders serve our community. Father God, may your protection be upon the leaders of our nation and enable them to strive their utmost to do what is right in your eyes for the peace and safety of our country. Be with and protect our armed force, our police, first responders, postal service, firefighters, and sanitary workers as they serve the people. We pray that you will impart wisdom to the ones who make the laws, that they will see that justice with fairness is carried on. Oh Lord, bless our hospitals, educational institutions, and businesses as they work towards making Hutchinson a better place. Heavenly Father, Creator and Sustainer of our lives, we bring this request to you in the holy name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Recognitions of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All right, citizens addressing the council, please come forward and state your name and address. Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Morgan Baum, 925 Second Avenue, Southwest Hutchinson. Tonight, I'm here to tell you a little bit about the big music festival that's happening in Hutchinson this weekend. It's our 11th year, and I'm one of the 175 volunteers that it takes to put the festival on. It's an all-volunteer-run festival, and there's a board that works all year round. They've already started planning 2020. This year, the festival kicks off on Friday at 6:00 PM. The doors open at 5:00. And then again on Saturday, it opens up at 11:00, and the first band goes on at noon. Tickets are only $25 for Friday and $32 on Sunday, and there's still tickets available at the gate. You guys have been really helpful and supportive in helping make sure River Song goes off every year really well, and so we just want to keep spreading the word about how great it would be for more community members to come down to the park. It's right over on the river, by the big stage next to the sanctuary where the campground is. This year, the headliners are the fabulous Armadillos doing party band songs and "I'm Ready to Dance." And on Friday night, and then on Saturday, a group from the '90s, from when we were in high school.
Some of us.
Some of us. Fastball is playing. I even had to Google them, so don't feel bad, Gary.
Thank you.
Their song was "The Way," and then they had two songs that were on the Billboard Top 100 called "Out of My Head" and "Firescape." And so I've been listening to a lot of their music, and I feel rockin' awesome. No, not really. So we also have another really fun band this year that people have been asking for forever called Four on the Floor on Saturday night, opening for Fastball. So I wanted to let you know, kids under the age of 14 get in for free with a paid adult, and there's tons of things to do. There's a parking, I'm sorry, there's a playground in the park, there's lawn games that are donated, there's a puppeter, no, this one's tough. It's the Z Puppet Rajin Schnoz family, and they're doing a puppet-making workshop for free on Saturday at 2:30. And then the Twistin' Vixen Hoopers are going to be back again this year, and you can hula hoop, which I hear is really good for the middle. And then last but not least, you can bring a bike. If you ride over, you get a $3 voucher towards food in the festival, and there is food and wine and beer and water to purchase, and water's free if you bring an empty bottle, but you can't bring anything else in. So just come with yourself and your bug spray. And then I said at the top that I'm a volunteer. If you want to volunteer, you get in for free for either of the days that you volunteer. Many of you guys volunteer every year, and there's still time to sign up. Just go to riversongfestival.org, click on Volunteer, and then go to the spot where it says what positions are still available. So I hope to see you all there. Again, it only happens because of volunteers like you and because the community keeps coming out to support it. So it's going to be a great 11th year, and all that weather is not going to come to Hutchinson. So if you can do anything about that, let me know. So I'll see you down there again at Friday. Gates open at 5:00.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have two people following you.
Yep, as instructed. Mayor, Council, thanks for the time. Just trying to start something a little bit different or a little bit new for the city of Hutchinson, and I guess it's my goal to introduce our new officers as they're hired to the council. So that's what we're here to do tonight.
And the community.
And the community.
And the community, yes. So to my right is Jose Villa Real. Is that right? And to my left is Madison Duvier. They've both been employees with the city for some time, working as hospital security officers, but they were most recently hired as police officers. First day, July 1, was that right?
Yep.
Yep, okay. So they've been employees since July 1. So I guess I would open it up if you guys have any questions. Otherwise, again, I just want to thank you for the time.
You did tell them part of the requirements, right? About the five-minute presentation they had to give in front of the council?
Ladies first, of course. No, it'd be nice just to get some background, see where they came from, hometown. Oh, come on, no, ladies first, ladies first.
I'm originally from Hutchinson. I graduated from Nevis, though, and I recently came back about three years ago. I got my two-year in Hibbing and got my bachelor's in St. Cloud, and now I'm here serving the community of Hutchinson. So I'm excited.
Welcome.
Welcome.
So, yeah, my name's Jose. I come from Fairfax, Minnesota. My family's still down there. I've been living here since 2015 because I started going to Ridgewater, which I got my two-year criminal justice degree. After that, I went to Skills in Alexandria and then took the post, got a job doing security here at the hospital, and now an officer for HCPD.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Chief Gifferson, I like this. I always like to meet the new officers, so welcome, and thank you for bringing them down.
Okay, well, thank you and thank you for the time.
Any other questions?
Any other que?
Welcome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have approval of minutes. We have the workshop of June 25, 2019, and regular meeting minutes of June 25, 2019.
Make a motion to approve them?
Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried consent agenda will be done with one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. A is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Hutchinson Fire Relief Association on September 7, 2019. B is approval of items for South Grade Road corridor improvement project, letting number two, project number 19-02. Under there is resolution number 15075, resolution declaring costs to be assessed and ordering preparation of purpose of assessment. Resolution number 15076, resolution for hearing on proposed assessment. C is approval of resolution number 15077, resolution rejecting bid and ordering re-advertising bids for letting number five, project number 19-10, water treatment plant reverse osmosis membrane element project. D is appointment of Mark Lansack to the Park Recreation and Community Education Board to August 2022, and E is claims and appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off?
B and C, just a quick question on that.
All righty. Motion to approve the balance?
Make a motion to approve the balance.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Steve to approve the balance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried B. Steve?
Yeah, I guess just a couple of things, you know. One, the bid is higher, significantly higher, about $400,000, a little bit more than what the estimate was. Wasn't sure where that falls in with our bonding plan and that, and then just, you know, I shared with the council and staff that when I was in Washington, I met with one of the engineers from Stone Brook and, you know, asked about, because they had worked with the signal analysis for MINDOT and asked about, you know, the roundabout, and, you know, there was some concerns expressed about how that might operate and the stacking that could happen. So with that, I guess I was just wondering, you know, where the council is, you know, still on the project. Kent, as far as...
Yep, I'll address the first question with respect to the construction costs. I think it boils down to what we've talked about for some time. We've been living on borrowed time with respect to our competitive bids in this area, and I think our luck, honestly, might be running out. We're seeing what others have been seeing for some time. Counties in the area, like I alluded to a few meetings ago, cities to the west of us, specific, or east of us, excuse me, specifically the Western Metro, we've heard the same concern from larger communities out in this region also, so it doesn't surprise me. You know, some of our normal, usual suspects, you know, in the contractor field, they didn't even bid the job. There's not enough labor out there. And fortunately enough, oil and fuel prices have remained where they're at. I mean, they could be a lot higher, as we're well aware of, and I think this is a new reality we're entering. We had two bids, they were very close, you know, unbelievably close. I don't believe that was a, could have been a coincidence, but I think it's more of a reality. Unfortunately, we didn't have more than two bids, but like I said, that's reflective of the environment we're in right now. And DOTs, I just heard a story earlier today, a county in our region here rejected a bid, and they had a significant amount of federal money. Significant portion of that project was funded by federal money, and the bid came in high, and they're going to walk away from it just because of what the cost is. But in the end, I do believe we have options. We're going to be talking at Resource Allocation Committee tomorrow evening and looking at our overall infrastructure program this year, and we'll see what we can do. We've already, Andy and I have already had some discussions how the program can be shaped following our last Resource Allocation Committee meeting, so I believe with the very favorable state aid balance that we've maintained over the last few years, I believe we're still in a position to deliver this project. Keep in mind, there's a large amount of grant dollars associated with the funding of this project also, so that somewhat offsets the, would offset the, you know, high bid, I guess, but...
Except that was kind of factored in beginning-wise, too, right? So as far as our plan. Do you think that just bidding this late in the year, you only had two bids, so people are busy versus bidding earlier in the year, you know, probably would open that up, just like it did with Fifth Avenue?
Yeah, I think maybe the prices are somewhat inflated. I don't believe that postponing the bid to bid it this winter or early next spring would be favorable. I mean, and we couldn't deliver, we've talked about the delivery timeframes associated with this project relative to Main Street, Highway 15. This couldn't be delivered in 2020. Really, now is the window of opportunity. With respect to the grant dollars, would they be available in 2021? I posed that question to MINDOT. They haven't directly answered it. They said that they would rather not have that be the case, so I think really now is the window of opportunity. Like I said, we've maintained a favorable state aid balance. I still believe once we, I get to crunching the numbers early tomorrow morning, and Andy and I have a discussion, and we talk about our resource, we'll see where we're at.
I mean, I guess that's, you know, that's part of the conversation in council. We'll have to have this, if you want to use more state aid dollars, because I think right now about $200,000 over are bonding. You know, there's options. We've done, we've been over in the past, and we've, you know, the year after that, we've maybe not bonded as much, and so there's flexibility. Those are just, for the council, those are things you're going to have to take into consideration that if you do decide to either use some more state aid or bond over our 2.2 that we usually do, that's going to have an impact somewhere, so.
But otherwise, another option is just to kind of pave what we got, redo that, add the trail. And one of those, you know, those options were significantly less expensive. Granted, you know, the state dollars weren't tied to that, but originally, that's what we had submitted, you know.
Yeah, that's up to consideration and debate between us and the state and timing, and a lot of moving parts on this, and there's been a lot of effort put into this development of this project at this point in time, and engagement of adjacent property owners, and, you know, yeah, an unfavorable bid is one thing, but you always have to account for the effort to get to this point of opportunity. And if you can make the math work, and like I say, we do have some favorable state aid balances and some options there, and if we don't deliver a pavement management program project this year, I, you know, and I think we can shape how we do that next year and possibly address either both sides of the rec center to get the pipes in the ground to improve the drainage in that area. So that's not a big concern, and that's what we'll talk about tomorrow and get a better handle on.
What about the other concern?
I've addressed that with MINDOT in an email earlier today. I'm disappointed with the person that corresponded with you. I'll point, I'll just be quite frank. I don't believe it was their role. I don't believe it's been their role with respect to this project's development from the beginning. I've shared the email with Matt that I've sent over to MINDOT, and I will be addressing that accordingly. Their role is to review the signal system, and I'll just read, and this is in the email to you, Steve, how Mr. Arvidson leads off his email. While I can offer an opinion on your comments below, I do not have the traffic model or any detailed knowledge of the analysis that was done to justify the roundabout. And I'll just leave it at that. I believe Mr. Arvidson overstepped his bounds in what he corresponded to you.
They were interesting comments. I was surprised at, you know, what was shared as part of that, and...
They were very guarded, vague comments in general. Mr. Arvidson was not directly involved in the review of this project. One of his staff people was. And I'm disappointed in him. I'm disappointed in how MINDOT enabled his company throughout this, the development of this project, and like I said, I'll be addressing this with MINDOT.
I think he was guarded in some respect because, you know, of the situation and stuff like that, so...
It's not his role within the development of this project.
Those were stated, though, and that's something that I, you know, asked, so I think it's still something that should be considered. I guess I would leave it at that, too. Because in the end, you know, we have to live with what is built there, and one thing, it's one thing during low traffic counts, you know, but during those times, it works just fine the way it is now. The question is, what happens when it gets busier, and how does that stacking, you know, get affected? And, you know, we've talked about, maybe the signal gets tweaked. Well, maybe that isn't so much of an option at that point, but because that was something that actually was analyzed. Would it affect the signal? So now, if we turn around and come back and say, can that be adjusted because the roundabout stacking is an issue, well, what's going to happen? We don't know. We can't answer that now. That'll be a question at that time if it becomes an issue. Again, I think it's something that should be considered before the project gets approved, so...
Yeah, this has been studied and analyzed by many throughout this process, city staff, MINDOT staff, our consultant, SRF consulting. Unfortunately, I, yeah, it's to a point where, you know, I stand behind the work that's been done and, you know, our consultants and what they've arrived at, what they've modeled. MINDOT's reviewed it, they've had their consultant review portions of our work, and, yeah, in the end, I think we're doing the right thing for the corridor as a whole. I just worry that we have, and, you know, we've reviewed this, I've reviewed this with the, I see Chief Gifferson left, but I've reviewed it with his predecessor. You know, this is an intersection that's, you know, is problematic, and it starts from Highway 15, and it goes through, you know, that cashwise entrance, mall entrance, whatever you want to call it, and it's a, you know, somebody trying to take that left there is going to get clipped someday, and, you know, and I'll just leave it at that. And it's, I don't like to play the safety card, but this is an unsafe situation. Yes, there is an accident history there, but we've known from some times that's a significant traffic driver in that area, and how that is configured is problematic. And like we talked many, many months ago, making a substantial investment just to reconfigure the lanes and possibly make that exiting left turn movement a longer turning movement isn't a wise investment in my mind, and then you might as well leave that east leg of the Highway 15, South Grade Road intersection, the Walgreens leg, we'll call it as-is, if you can't make the continuity improvements down all the way through the cashwise mall entrance area. I think you have to look at it from a corridor standpoint, and, you know, if traffic ever does increase in that area, I think we'll be fortunate to have that sort of intersection traffic control mechanism there. Because I think it, there's a situation waiting to happen there, and like I said, Chief Hatton and I spoke about that, and that's what we studied, and a lot of people studied long and hard, is that, as this project was developed. And in the end, yes, is there trade-off with respect, trade-offs with respect to traffic flow on South Grade Road? Yeah, I don't doubt that. Anytime you do an intersection improvement, put in a roundabout, a traffic signal, stop signs, you know, there's a trade-off there from a flow standpoint, but people can't sit there forever trying to take a left to get out of that area either.
But they're not. I mean, even the analysis is like 19 seconds or...
Like I said, Steve, I'll stand behind it.
24, it gets to 30 seconds, so...
I'll stand behind it, and the people we've engaged arrive at this solution, and I'll leave it up to the rest of the council and yourself to make the decision at some point here.
But those are the numbers that were provided in there, too, so...
I mean, and it's not only this, it's, I've heard it from the public, too. They're all concerned about a roundabout, you know. They're worried about stacking, you know, that they're going to be, people are going to be coming out and going up to the lights and how the signals are and how they can get on, how they can get around. I mean, and I'm not an expert on any of that, so, but it's just that I have heard it. There is some concern about that mini roundabout out there.
And I would say for the council, that's one of the risks that, I mean, the report noted that there's possibilities that stacking may occur.
There's possibilities now, honestly, with respect to the lefts and all sorts of movements. And Mary, with respect to the roundabout concerns, every roundabout that's been built in this community, we've had concerns. You know how many concerns were here after those roundabouts, for the most part?
Well, I think at first, people were concerned, you know.
None.
And this is, it's just that this is such a busy place.
And that's why we're addressing it in this manner.
I agree with, it's a busy place. I agree with that.
It's not just that, it's also just the proximity, the difference is the proximity to the signal.
To the signals, right. There's no other place that has that.
Well, Steve, what do you want to do? You want to kind of maybe just hold off on it, or what do you want to do?
Procedure-wise, this, what's in front of you tonight is you're obviously looking to call an assessment hearing. You're not officially approving the project, that's after the assessment hearing, but, you know, there's essentially two steps left. One is what's in front of you tonight, and the second one would be what takes place after that assessment hearing.
Well, previously, I had asked, you know, if we could have some people come in who worked on the project, you know, and to... worked on the project, you know, and to just provide a comfort level. And if MINDOT had to agree to some of this, um, well, part of it, and I, what I don't understand totally is, um, their role in the roundabout part since that's really on the city right away. It's not state right away and, you know, the signal is.
This State Eight Street, so they had to approve their roundabout.
And, uh, but it, again, I, if I had my druthers, I'd still have some people come in and, you know, answer some questions and provide.
So like Matt said, we could, we could act on this and then maybe is there a possibility of having somebody come in and talk on it? Yeah, I don't know exactly what you wanna hear at this point, honestly, and from whom. I mean, the information's been provided. I think it's ultimately, this point in the process, it's, I think what Matt just said, this orders a hearing for the award potentially, the approval of the assessment role and the project award at the next council meeting. Honestly, if that doesn't happen at the next council meeting, wait, we, we wait till the first one in August, this project doesn't happen this year. I mean, the, we've been waiting for MINDOT's blessing and, you know, trying to orchestrate this for months and, and the process this has gone through, and I just keep echoing that. And, you know, I have a lot of faith in the people that, you know, we can have people come in and, you know, answer, you know, council member cooks twelve questions, but I don't know if that's absolutely necessary at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions before us.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, second by myself to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, four to one. Uh, Steve, see?
Yeah, I guess I was just wondering what was in addendum number one.
Uh, it was simply clarification on the bidder questionnaire on this type of project and what we've done on these membrane projects, both on the wastewater side and the water side. And this is the second time around as far as replacing, upgrading our own membranes is, you know, we wanna be very careful we get the product that we want. And one way of doing that is basically having a, a bidder approval process where we have a questionnaire, we, we score the questionnaire, you have to score above a certain threshold point wise, and then we tell you that you can submit a bid on the project and then the, the approved bidders can submit a bid and we will open it. If you're not approved and submit a bid, we won't open it. Likewise, if you submit a bid and you don't provide us a questionnaire that we've requested a week or so before the bids, we won't open it either. So we clarified some things with respect to that bidders, that bidder questionnaire process. Unfortunately, our only bidder failed to acknowledge that addendum on their bid. There was really no substance to it. But it's, it's pretty typical process. We require the addendums to be acknowledged.
Okay. Let's just question.
So unfortunate, we're basically gonna burn up a month or so rebidding it, but is what it is.
Make a motion to approve, um, rejecting that bid and then ordering the re-advertising.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, uh, no public hearing, communications, request petition, unfinished business? New business. Uh, summary review of the two thousand eighteen audit comprehensive annual financial report.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Council. Each year the city's required to, uh, compile financial statements, basically showing where we sit with our net position and our financials in general. Just to give you a, a little bit of information on the process, finance starts in December on our, our year end financial process and that extends in through the end of March. And then the auditors come in in April for their fieldwork and then we finalize, um, this two hundred and forty-five page document in June. So it's a fairly lengthy process, um, but it is required by, by state statute. Abdu Iken Myers is our audit firm and two individuals are here tonight. Lane Cockelman, who's the audit manager, and he's been here several years, and Andy Berg, a partner with the firm. But just, just before I turn it over to them, um, we did have a more detailed review of, of the financial statements at the workshop previously. This is gonna be more of a summary review, it's not gonna take too long. But before I turn it over to them, I just wanna let the public know that hard copies of this report can be found here at City Center or at the public library. It can also be found on the city's website under finance. And then also a state requirement is that we publish summary financial statements in, in our local paper and that's gonna happen tomorrow and tomorrow is Hutch Leader Edition. Also, uh, kinda mentioned the, the work that's involved. I wanna thank finance staff, the, the entire staff and specifically Justin, uh, for all the hard work he put in, uh, with this financial report and with the, with the CAFER that you see in front of you. Uh, so with that said, I wanna turn it over to, to Lane Cockelman. I think he's gonna, um, go through this summary review for you tonight. And then after that is complete, we just ask that you formally approve the two thousand eighteen comprehensive audit report.
Like I said, my name's Lane. Uh, I'll go through the, the summary report here. Again, it's gonna be pretty high level. I'll try to keep it pretty short for you guys here. Uh, so again, Andy and I, thanks for, for having us. Uh, I think we've been involved in this engagement for a few years now and staff does a great job and we appreciate their, their help as well. Uh, so our twenty thou, or two thousand eighteen audit results, our audit opinion is a clean or unmodified depending on the financial statements. Uh, we don't have any financial statement findings to report. We don't have any legal compliance findings to report either. Uh, as Andy stated, is a CAFER, which has been awarded every year since nineteen ninety-six and is applied for again in two thousand eighteen. Uh, the city did not expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars during the year of federal dollars, uh, so there's no single audit requirements during the year. There's also one new accounting standard that was implemented during the year, which was GASB, GASB Statement Number Seventy-Five, which is post-employment benefits, and that required about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar prior period restatement on the financial statements. At the end of the year, the city's total net position increased by a little under fourteen million dollars and that compared to an increase of about five million dollars in two thousand seventeen. Uh, the government type activities accounted for about two-thirds of this increase. A lot of it's related to the, uh, early lease payoff, uh, related to the hospital that paid the city during the year, about six million dollars. Uh, the remaining increase is due to the enterprise funds, mainly just due to the operational aspect of the water sewer, electric and gas operations of the city, setting some of those dollars aside for future capital improvements. Uh, the general fund balance also increased by about five hundred thousand dollars during the year. Uh, licenses and permits were over budget by about two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, uh, and that also compared to total expenditures being a hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than budget. There's also a five hundred thousand dollar transfer from the community improvement fund, uh, again relating to that hospital lease buyout agreement. Uh, this helped offset the four hundred thousand dollars that was set aside for treaty mitigation fund balance, uh, that was moved over to that fund from the general fund. Uh, so at the end of the year, total fund balance represented about fifty-five percent of general fund expenditures, uh, and the transfers out of the fund, and we would recommend anywhere from thirty-five to fifty percent. And the city's fund balance policy is forty percent in that aspect, so well above that. Uh, some of the other governmental, uh, governmental funds, I have positive fund balance. There's a few exceptions to that, some tax increment funds and some capital project funds. A lot of that's due to timing of when the revenues are gonna be, uh, received and when that revenue's gonna be recognized in the fund statements. Uh, these deficits will be offset in the future by transfers from other funds, some bond proceeds, federal and state grants, um, and then some tax increments when those come in. Uh, and the enterprise funds, they have sufficient cash flows to fund operating costs and debt service, a very healthy cash reserves and those have been building over the years, uh, again to set aside for future capital improvements. And with that, that is all we had. So again, I wanna thank, uh, Andy and Justin for their great work and for all their help throughout the year and thank you guys, Mayor and City Council for, for having us and for, uh, listening to our presentation tonight. Any questions?
Obviously, Mayor, Council, and least of those in the public, there was a workshop prior to, to the regular meeting where we went more in depth than that, so this was the, the high level overview of it.
I have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to approve the audited comprehensive annual financial report.
Yeah, very good.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, what we have in front of you is, uh, engineering services agreement, but it, it goes a little bit beyond that, uh, and really spills into the, uh, consideration of the project as a whole. And it's something that staff has spent a lot of time on in conjunction with the neuroengineering who, who helps us out quite a bit on the water wastewater front. They're a, a goo, a very good technical, uh, engineering company. But, uh, in summary, what, what we're asking for is a consultant agreement, I think it's just short of thirty-four thousand dollars to be approved, uh, and then that really starts the process, uh, to develop the ditcheration project, which briefly is, uh, improving how, uh, oxygen is fed to one of the old ditches. Uh, and this ditch is a part of the original plant built in the mid eighties and, uh, improving efficiencies, structural aspects, and ultimately the long-term sustainability of, uh, this equipment. And, um, you know, we've looked, tried to look forward, you know, we might have some wastewater, new wastewater effluent permit parameters passed out on us from the MPCA, so we wanna keep that in mind as we're developing these projects and make sure we're spending our money wisely. So we've, like what's alluded to within the packet, we've, uh, redeveloped our approach here with the assistance of Nero and I believe we have a cost-effective approach, like I said, that'll involve, uh, through approximately thirty-four thousand in engineering fees and then ultimately procurement of equipment, which the city will do directly, uh, under the, uh, the advice, uh, the guidance of neuroengineering. And then there will also be a construction contract to install the equipment. That'll be ultimately approved by, by council. Both those items will be more than a hundred thousand dollars, so, but they'll be under the, uh, public bid threshold of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So with that, uh, Tim Grackey's also here this evening, if you have any specific questions with respect to, uh, the actual project.
Yes, I was just curious. It talked about as a future step to look at adding VFDs. Those are variable frequency drives that help operate, um, motors at speeds slower than, um, normal line voltage, so, and that becomes more efficient and, um, and that's where part of the rationale behind what's being proposed is to increase efficiency and then, and as a next step, maybe VFDs would be looked at, but why not do that now, I guess?
Yeah, correct. Excuse me. Um, so what was first proposed was to just take the existing Arrow Two mixers that were side-mounted onto the ditches and correctly place some center channel. So the money that was proposed in the CIP was basically to make, uh, to build two bridges so that we could do that.
Yeah.
Upon studying that, we said, and then we were gonna keep the rotors in place also. Um, the rotors are in very disrepair, so, um, it was evaluated, um, quickly through the facility assessment that it would be better served to take out the rotors and then better mount the, the Arrow Two, uh, mixers inside where the rotors were. Um, and then we would do that with the four, um, Arrow Two mixers that we presently have. We had two in each ditch, but we operate one ditch now. Um, we're able to, to operate, uh, efficiently on just one ditch. So we're gonna take all four of those rotors, put them in the rehab ditch that we just removed all the grit out of. Um, we're gonna get rid of the rotors, either leave the two other rotors in their spots or if in the construction bidding, it seems favorable to get rid of all of them at one time, economies of scale and put in all the bracing for two future Tritons in those positions, we would do that. Because the size of this project in doing so kinda escalated to around two hundred and sixty total, uh, thousand dollars, and that was above the two hundred, two twenty that we slated in the CIP, we tried to s, keep it to an economy of scale that would more fit what we proposed. So, um, and, and adding VFDs, um, that would become more efficient. We're, we're thinking that just do, moving from the rotors doing the mixing and aerating, um, by one speed, one process, to moving to these Arrow mixers, which have separate blowers, so we could separate mixing and aeration, so that makes the process more efficient already. Um, so we can add blowers on or off as DO levels, yet keep mixing and thus we can also stagger, um, the, the use of the Arrows too. So if we need more mixing or more air, we can turn them on and off, um, separately. But we do have a couple VFDs, um, that are on rotors, but, uh, they're a little bit oversized right now, so, um, that's a consideration, but that might be something that gets fledged out from this survey and engineering process.
Not knowing the process, like when you talk about the ditch, is that actually in one of the buildings or?
Um, actually, it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a two, two point one six million gallon tank, basically. It's oval shaped. Um, it's about seventy feet wide by seven hundred feet long. Um, and basically, that's, that's, what's that? Yep, it's outside, but the, the rotors are in enclosures, so they are, a lot of times they are exposed to the elements, but these are in, in, uh, concrete ex, uh, enclosures because these used to be, uh, the two biggest oxidation ditches in all Midwest, so, um, North Dakota just built a couple bigger. Yeah, they add all, do us, you know, all that, all that oil money. So, um, yeah, so because, because we have not a lot of BOD to take care of, but we have flow, we're able to run just on one ditch. And so we've had the east ditch down just about for four years now since I've arrived and been able to maintain that, um, year-round. And so, uh, one of the reasons we were waiting to get that piles of grit taken out of there and then also rehab all those rotors, well, we found out it, we're better served by not sticking the money into the rotors and going and replacing the, the Tritons in their place, becoming more efficient that way. And that gives us also operational efficiency, not just energy-wise. So we're replacing sixty horsepower run rotors with thirty horsepower mixers.
Some savings there.
Anything else?
No, I think like Tim mentioned, we, we wanna be respectful of, uh, the capital improvement plan as much as possible, so we're, we're, you know, you gotta put some engineering effort into these things on the front end and then, you know, figure out where the numbers are gonna land, get a good cost estimation, you know, go for quotes, bids, you know, go to vendors with respect to equipment. And at the end of the day, we hope that our, you know, our, our swag added that goes into the CIP somewhat mirrors what, uh, what we're arriving at and, and like Tim alluded to, we've already accounted for the VFD aspects, you know, that, that's, might not be feasible at this point in time, but, uh, you know, we're gonna, cause we always have other needs or other projects and improvements, you know, that are also in the CIP that we're hoping in, to deliver, so we don't want any one improvement to eat up all the money per se, so. to eat up all the money per se. So, you know, if we learn more through the engineering process, you know, there might, in essence, be kind of phase two of this improvement that starts showing up on the, the CIP in next year or in out-years.
Any other questions? Motion to approve the project, or?
I'll make a motion to approve the project.
I'll second it.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Thanks. We have Hutch Utilities Commission minutes from May 29, 2019, Economic Development Authority Board minutes from April 24 and May 21 of 2019, Tall Grass Noxious Weed reports for May and June of 2019, and Liquor Hutch Quarterly Report. Tim, do you have anything else for us tonight?
I'm happy to say our blower for the MBR Irritation Project, it was way back, approved back in January or so, arrived on site, and we begun installation, and hopefully we'll be commissioning that near the end of the month for service.
Great, thanks. Kent?
Yep, two things. Most importantly, mosquito control.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, no, John's been on top of that, and we were just talking about it earlier today, and we were gonna do our normal barrier treatment prior to River Song and, you know, in preparation for that this weekend, obviously. And been happy with the counts. I think overall, what we've noticed staff-wise, we've been pleased with the effectiveness of the mosquito control this year. I think, I don't know, maybe it's a little bit of the combination and timing of the weather and, you know, albeit we haven't had a lot of drier, hotter weather yet, you know, for an extended, you know, breeding period. But I think we're, we're confident that the applications that have been done up to this point have served us well, and we're looking like we're gonna probably go two weeks into August, just knowing how, how wet it's been up to this point in time. And then lastly, Fifth Avenue, things are going well. The 3M entrance is open back up from the east, and Stage Two starts on Monday, the 15th, and what that entails is basically Main Street to the west to Lynn Road will then be shut down. Thus, either side of Main will be shut down for a period we anticipate how we have the project staged and specified for three weeks until August 9. And then after that point, we're hoping the contractor gets weather to cooperate, and we get everything back to a gravel grade, at the very least on the west side of Main Street prior to Labor Day weekend, prior to school starting. So, that whole corridor, granted, it might not be paved at that point west of Main Street, but that whole corridor will be open from a busing standpoint at that point in time. Yeah, can't believe we're talking about school Saturday already, but yeah. Anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Subora?
Something else tonight?
Mary, start with you tonight.
Oh, okay. I have one thing. I've had a couple of people come talk to me about the summer temps that do the gardening in the medians, and they said, they used to always park their pickup truck close to where they were so people could see that, and when they're in there and they're bent over, they don't put anything out there. I think they're startling people or they're not watching, and they're afraid they're gonna hit someone. They said, could they please put an orange cone out somewhere to give the person who's driving a car a heads up that there's young people in there weeding and doing things? Because now they don't park their trucks anywhere by their, you know, I, they talked about the one on Roberts Road, that median that has the flowers in it, and they also talked about the one up by Park Elementary, you know.
Man, I know they, I know they're wearing orange vests, but it's, it's funny because people then complain when they're parking where they used to complain, so you try to balance that.
I know.
Yeah, I think it's something that I can talk with Dolph just about.
Right. I mean, they wear their vests and that, but they just said, you know what? We need to have a better heads up. We don't wanna, you know, they could be not looking either in drift. So, I'm just telling you what I've been told.
One percent.
That's it. Go to River Song, enjoy the weekend. Sounds like the weather's gonna be warm, but there's water there. You'll be fine.
Dave?
Yeah, I think the only thing that I would say is on the Linden Holding Pond, the new one, people are actually letting their kids go down and wait in that thing, and I would certainly, certainly suggest that they do not do that. Monkey see, monkey do. And the story, I didn't see this actually, but the lady that was telling me about it said, actually the parents were down by the edge of the water with the kids, letting the kids be in the pond. It is not safe, so.
You know, Dave, that's my fault because I kicked them out of the one in the library square.
Yes, you took them out of the fountain.
I'm glad you clarified that.
Yeah.
But either place, it's not safe. I mean, you got duck droppings, you got goose droppings, you got stuff in there, so it's not a clean, clean place to be.
It's a retention pond for what goes in.
Yeah, it's a retention pond, and that's what it's designed for. So, just a warning to...
Do you post that? Is there a little sign out there that says this is not for waiting or doing something?
You don't need any more signs. We need a little more common sense.
Mm-hmm.
On the grass.
I agree with that, but...
I think when you...
The plants grow up.
Then they won't get in there, is what I think.
That will help too.
Right.
But that's all I have.
Have a little buffer zone going. Yeah. Anything else, Steve?
No, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thanks. Steve?
Just one thing. Kent, on the Main Street?
Yep.
You know, the streetscaping at our last committee meeting, you know, we were talking about the planners that were being looked at, and the price of $4,000 was talked about. And it wasn't clear, is that for all of them or is that per unit?
It'd be per unit.
Yeah.
Yeah, just due to the, the amount of metal involved and, you know, talking to, to Matt over Redline, and I haven't heard back from him, so I'm just, I would really want us to really vet that out with him and have a good understanding, and then we can go from there. Yeah, it's a little more than we expected, and we talked about months ago, but, you know, and this might be something that ultimately comes back to the citizen advisory group, you know, once we learn more from Matt, and maybe we'll be back to looking at other options or whether they're desirable at all, I guess, moving forward at that price point.
Remember, there is, what, 17 plans?
Uh, I think per our recent layout with, in conjunction with parks from a few months ago, we're down to 14.
Okay.
Yeah. I think there were 17, give or take, Steve, beyond the original Mindot layout, yeah.
And then that original planter that was being looked at, those are like $600, but I don't know what the constructions like.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. We don't know exactly, yeah, how sturdy and how they feel, and yeah. I know we, we get a little bit of an idea what they look like aesthetically based on a photo, but, no, I envision this. I'm hoping to learn more from, from Matt and, and Redline there, and then I think we'll, we'll have some information, have a conversation starting with the citizen advisory group, yeah.
All right. That's all. Thanks.
Chad?
I didn't have anything left.
Mr. Yannick?
Just two things for the council, and I'll follow this up with an email, but something to be thinking about. You know, we're in the process of doing the preliminary budget, and so we've got preliminary budgets that are due by July 26, and the CIPs are July 19. So, if there's items or thoughts you'd like to see for, to be included in the preliminary budget, just to, to kind of let me know. Like I said, I'll follow up with, and emailed everybody, but just wanted to take this opportunity to share that with you now, as well as if there's something I want to see included in that preliminary budget, just to let me know. That's it, otherwise.
I have nothing.
Really?
Yeah. I don't, since Dave talked about people waiting in the, I don't have anything else, so.
Go to River Song.
Yep.
Do you want to say that your little story in the paper was about you moving from wherever you were at, which I would have no clue, moving out to Michigan Avenue? I thought that was quite an interesting story, 25 years ago. I didn't realize you were that old, actually.
Yeah. With that, that's adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?